Good evening, good evening. The time is 5:04 and welcome to the work session. Today, we are going to conduct a workshop to discuss one acre lots and city sewer services or septic systems. I can confirm we do have a forum, so we can proceed. So, I know recently, we had this on the agenda and... Yes? Let me have one. I just have a study that I'm, that I have a copy, a copy for all the council members. And this is just something that you can take with you, but I did want to just read. This is a study by Helen Ladd, is Urban Studies, volume twenty-nine, November second, nineteen-ninety-two. She is with the University of Duke. And this is just on population density, so some of what we've been talking about in relation to one acre lots. So, I wanted to include it with everybody's packets. Okay. So, again, the purpose in looking at this was just to provide options for developers on the fringes of our city to do the one acre lots. I know that we've had it in our code that they could, however, it seems that there's some discrepancy as to maybe they don't think that they'll get approved if they do bring it, or maybe in the past they didn't. So, just trying to make it maybe optional, so that's what we're here to talk about. So, I don't know. Anybody wants to chime in?
We have a little bit of, a couple of things to present if you'd like, just to try to get the same information out to everyone about what our neighbors do.
You can turn to the... Which one's that? Got it. There you go.
Okay, so, in Cedar Park, Round Rock, Hutto, and Flugerville, for the most part, septic is, well, Cedar Park and Round Rock, it's not permitted. In Hutto, it can be permitted depending on circumstances, what they told us. If it's a large subdivision, they wouldn't allow it. If it's a one-off, a building, a church, or something that it was too costly to extend sewer, they might allow it. Flugerville doesn't allow it in the city limits, only in the ETJ. And then Kyle is one that's a little closer to us, is that if you're more than quarter of a mile from wastewater line, it can be allowed, unless you're in the Plum Creek Drainage Basin, and then it's not allowed. In Leander, it, in the city limits, it's permitted if there are topographic issues or as approved by the city council. So, this was, it, it looks simple, it was pretty difficult to get these answers in these cities, it's not something they talk about a lot, but... And then, so where do we actually have these developments in town? If you want to click over to the map.
I'm sorry, could I ask you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, we'll go back to it.
There we go. Let me go back to the slideshow.
Do we have any idea what the percentage built out these are? I mean, Cedar Park, we know they're pretty much built out. They, you know, have what, a hundred, two-hundred acres left? Round Rock, I'm not sure. And Flugerville, I'm not sure. Do y'all have...
Flugerville has a lot. You know, Cedar Park's still gonna add a whole lot of population, so, so will Round Rock.
As far as the land capacity that they have, you know, how the reports come through, I guess LISD demographic reports is the last one that shows what percentage buildable land is still available.
No, we don't have that on the survey. And then I did, I apologize, I skipped over Georgetown, missed them. If you're more than half mile from wastewater, it is allowed. But, there is a caveat on that, if you're on a five-year CIP where it shows an extension, it's not allowed.
So, they pay for it? Georgetown does? I guess they do if it's on a CIP.
No, the developer'd have to do it, and the city would probably oversize.
Why would it be on a CIP then?
Pardon me?
Why would it be on a capital improvement project?
Well, if it's five years out, and the city wasn't prepared to do it, they're just not gonna let you, I guess unless you build the sewer line.
Well, and that's where we would, that's the oversizing. So, on our five-year CIP, if a developer came in...
Got it.
They might pull the base aside, and we'd pay for the increase.
Got it. Thank you.
Same thing.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And then, let me go to the map that's not actually in our spreadsheet. No, this is actually gonna be a different map. This is similar information on our wastewater map, and this identifies the wastewater lines that are greater than ten in, ten inches or greater.
Awesome.
And then our sewer shed. And I can zoom if we need to.
If you go to view up there, you should do, you should be able to view, full screen.
Just it'll be slow. It'll have to load up again.
Okay, so, just to go over the ones that we have, if you wanna follow me, can you point when I've gone off the speaker? Whit Ranch, if you start up in the north, is under construction.
Does that say how big it is?
Those are acre lots. Robin might be able to tell you.
We're not zooming, we're just following along the hand. So, I'll have to look.
Okay, Robin, look up Whit Ranch. Then you have Great Woods North, that's almost built out. Great Woods South, that's approved for it. Then you go down to Grand Mesa. And then, we do have some septic in the fairways. And then, I guess if we head east, well, northeast, there's Falcon Oaks, which is old. And actually, on this agenda, we have the preliminary engineering to put sewer through Falcon Oaks. And then there's Mockingbird Lane, right there. There you go, those homes are on septic. And then Ridge Mar Landing.
And these are all one acre plus?
Uh, ye, yes.
Falcon Oaks is not being...
Yeah, but those, Falcon Oaks were probably put in before there was a law.
Yeah.
And then we go up to Reagan's Overlook. And then to the Bonnet Track. Now, while they've been approved, they're still, the sewer is so close, they're trying to decide how they wanna do it. They may wanna sewer it.
Where is the sewer line up there? We purchased capacity in part of Liberty Hill system, that goes along there.
It's pretty close.
What's the one down there, kinda by Journey Parkway?
That's actually not in the city limits.
Okay.
We showed it on the map, but it's, it's not in the city.
The original purpose of this map that we started from was to identify the wastewater basins for...
Gotcha.
What area it went where.
Thank you.
And then we've had a couple that are on either side of Reagan's Overlook that we're talking to right now. They're smaller, but they are talking about acre lots. But now that sewer is much closer, the church brought sewer across Reagan, they're considering whether they wanna do acre lots, or acre lots on sewer, or do something different.
How far away are they?
Um, it's, I think the one south is like...
It's right there. It's at Breakers.
So, eight, less than a quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
This purple line here is sewer. This whole line is sewer going down to the main line. And the tracks that I've looked at it are right here, and I think this one up here.
And the church already did the bore under Reagan, so it's nominal cost.
So, that's sort of what exists on the ground today. And, you know, there was a time when we expected on the west of Grand Mesa was gonna have a lot of this, but now it's in canyon lands, so it'll never be developed. And we don't know if the remaining land out there between Treviso and the canyon, if that's gonna end up in the canyon lands as well.
You mean dedication, or well-reserved land?
Right, and it'll never be developed. So, you wanna, can you kinda point to the two, I don't know if you know, the two tracks that are in the canyon lands now?
There's Treviso, isn't it? These two right here?
Yep, those two right there were sold to Travis County. And so, you, the land south of that, down to there, and...
This is Treviso's boundary.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's all that's left out there. Now, there's some on the other side of Nameless, but that's probably a long way away.
And where's the wastewater line over there in Treviso?
It's in with the street network.
Oh, okay.
So, this is the developed portion of Street Treviso. This is the left-to-be-developed area. So, what we're showing here are the flooded lots.
But Treviso Parkway is gonna go all the way back and connect to Nameless, so the sewer will be out on Nameless Road.
And as I was looking at this map, I was trying to figure out where would any acre-sized lots be developed, especially since land has gotten so expensive now. It's, it might not be affordable to do acre-sized lots on a lot of that land.
That's a good question.
Well, the land we just talked about is one of, is, if, if it doesn't go into canyon lands.
Okay, that would be it.
Hereaway going west?
Yeah.
Hereaway, the theoretical lake line extension.
Going north?
Yeah. I really appreciated the tax value comparison that... Can't think of his name.
So...
Yes, that he, plastic provided. I thought that was a really big issue we need to consider.
David could talk to you a minute about that, if you wanted to, about the economics of one acre lots. One of the reasons they're going further and further away is because they gotta get the lower land price, and that work. And David, if you want to...
There's something I call a litmus test. When we used to look at lots as developer land, raw land as a developer, the problem is, is you don't wanna spend too much time looking at it. You wanna kick it to the curb quickly. If it doesn't fit, a basic litmus test. And this is a simplification of a very large spreadsheet. But the point is, is, stand up. The thirty thousand dollars an acre, right? You can do the forties through the nineties, but that's gonna be the result of your home sales price. At thirty thousand dollars an acre, at today's dollar, builders are averaging cost per square foot. If you get into the half acre and the one acre lots, you have to get that land price down to that, to make 'em work, so that you can get your assumed profit margin down there at the bottom. If you don't, you're gonna go farther out, if you, if you wanna do those lots.
But can I ask you, like, at Reagan's Overlook, they're selling for seventy-five thousand an acre?
And then they're gonna need public dollars. You're gonna need some sort of taxpayer dollars to deficit fund that, or get some...
No, it's already being built out right now. It's a, it's a neighborhood that already, I don't know...
They're charging the consumer that, but that's not what they purchased it for. I think this is his purchase...
He's talking about the raw land that you purchased it.
So, and then you can see all the way to the end, that's basically what your value per acre will be with that type of product value. Right? And it's not just a steady incremental value. There's, there's a lot of assumptions in there, what you give up for your street right away, your stormwater, that kind of thing, based on what kind of density you get. The problem, we always analyze, what I wanted to do quickly was analyze, what is the land zoned for, and was it worth the brain damage going through a zoning case? And so, if you're trying to get into that, twenty-four percent of your market shed can't afford anything over three-hundred thousand dollars, well, if it's not already zoned for that, do you wanna try to go through that brain damage?
Is this septic or sewer?
This was all city utilities.
City utilities.
It's not.
And so, when they do septic, not only are they saving the cost of pulling the actual line, do they, do they still have to do a water detention-retention pond on septic?
Absolutely. Stormwater is required for all disturbance in your streets.
We've had some septic, not septic, but some large lot subdivisions that have not needed detention, 'cause they showed that they, the increase wasn't there. Increase and runoff. 'Cause they're changing the type of graphs, and they're slowing the water down.
I think the rule is, if you don't exceed twenty percent impervious cover for the whole project, including the home and the streets, you don't have to have...
And that's, yeah, in the contributing zone. It's a little different in Travis County with the hollows.
Yeah.
I guess technically.
So, that is a lot more money as well, so it's not...
And so, it just depends, like the Bonnet Track, to them, it was a toss-up, and they think people, if the cost is between septic and sewer is the same, they'd rather do sewer, 'cause people won't have to mess with, dealing with the septic tank. So, it just depends on the location of the land. But you're right, if you have to drag sewer line miles, it's not gonna work.
So, we all got an email earlier this week that showed how it impacts taxes when you have the smaller lot sizes. Do we have any data or numbers that we typically work with that demonstrate how much it costs us in services?
Not that detailed, but, so, what you look at, there's, there's the services, the people services that you provide, police and fire. And so, if Treviso had developed like Grand Mesa, you're probably still gonna need a fire department out there, but then you don't have the people to pay for it. On the other hand, as Treviso is developed now versus Grand Mesa, you're obviously gonna get more animal control, more police, more EMS, more, more fire calls. The biggest cost is usually infrastructure maintenance. So, you've, you've got roads, and that's usually the biggie. So, you have fewer people paying for close to the same linear feet of roads, so there's...
But it would also be less traveled if you don't have a bunch of houses on it.
Um, that's, that's true. If, and it's the type of traffic that matters as much as the quantity.
So, there's not like a formula that's typically used to figure those out?
The dragging on the city services?
We could probably, well, we had it done on, the first time around on Chapman Parks. We, we had someone analyze the revenue generated by Chapman Parks and the cost for all those So, I think you gotta look at it case by case, but you can do it.
Can we get a copy of, as well as this report?
Yeah.
'Cause it's...
Yes.
And then, of course, we're not even touching on the impact of forty-foot lots versus an acre lot on our school system.
You know, and I think the whole thing that, that kinda caused this, if we look at developments that we've had, Chapman Parks, great example, or some areas even close to Reagan's Overlook, or the ones, what was it, Pecan Grove? Was that on Journey Parkway? Is that what it's called?
Concreek.
Concreek. You know, it was that people that have acreage, you know, think that something with thirty and forty and fifty-foot lots just doesn't fit the surrounding environment. And so, they turn out in droves, because they don't want that kinda traffic next to an existing neighborhood. So, you know, I mean, I don't know...
Looks like fifty-six and seventy's kinda a sweet spot.
Oh, I agree. I, I think, I agree with you. I think the thirty and forty-foot lots can be a real issue.
Well, and really, we're also talking about developments that are right up against the city boundaries.
You wanna go back to the map?
I'm sorry, for the one acre. Yeah, and that's why they do it, 'cause it's so far away. You know?
Yeah, I, I think when this ordinance came in, it was, it was regards to what it was looking like with the Great Woods. Big chunk of the city was gonna be cut off from sewer, and it was gonna force decisions on the rest of the landowners, that they were gonna have to develop in that manner.
I'm sorry, is all the yellow the city limit? Or is that the wastewater drainage?
It's the wastewater drainages.
And so, what good part of, what amount of the city would be cut off if Great Woods?
North and west.
Let me zoom in to that.
Is it west, right at the, right at the boundary, anyone? Where is the boundary?
Yellow.
Well, you can't see it on...
The north side, though, where northwest of Chapman Parks, that was all gonna be developed too, right?
Yes.
Free openness, thank you.
And then the question is, that, anything else out, out to the west? Now, obviously, when it's, when you've already got some sort of large lot development, it's really, really unlikely to change.
I guess that's the thing, like in a, in a theoretical future land map, wouldn't you, at this point, knowing that those are already there, wouldn't you allow the developments to the west and north of them to be one acre lots?
Oh, they're allowed now.
Well, I mean, I guess the, the question is, do people think they can do them? Or, or would you allow them to be on septic? You know?
Well, and the, the council can make that decision now, but the, the issue out there, when Mr. Montgomery came in, however many years ago it was, that's the first thing I told him, is no matter what you do, you're not gonna generate enough money to drag those roads out there. That's why the land was so, so cheap and so attractive. So, water, water was close. Sewer was something of an issue, but nothing compared to the roads.
Right.
So, then that issue is compounded when you try to, the, the issue is when you jump way out, and then you try to fund the roads, water, and just say forget sewer for a minute, it's still gonna be way too much for one acre lots. It's almost too much for Chapman Parks, the, the density that they had proposed, 'cause they never really presented a plan of how to fund all the roads.
And that was twelve hundred acres.
I know they were gonna do PIDs, so...
Yeah, but it didn't cover it all. The PID didn't cover it all. I think that was...
Yeah, and then was, were people gonna buy, pay that much for a home with all that extra PID money they were gonna have to put into it way out there?
Way up, yeah.
So, what we talked about recently was coming up with a system where if you're skipping over undeveloped land, and you incur the infrastructure cost, that you'd have a mechanism for getting repaid once the other land develops.
Yep.
That would play into something like this.
What would that look like?
Well, I mean, that was just things we talked about last time, whether it's, it's some sort of taxing unit or, or roadway impact fee.
It's like a mini TERS where...
That's one way.
If they incurred the cost of dragging or building a road, that as land to the south or whatever got developed, then they would be reimbursed by the impact fees or whatever in roadway.
Development agreement.
Yeah.
Would do it.
So, that's one way to do it.
But, this is really a pretty simple issue. There's not a whole lot...
Left.
Around it. It's just a few issues.
Can I ask James, I know, do you know any, I mean, has the land cost just got out of reach for most of those parts of Leander anyway?
Well, it, it, for the most part in Leander, yes. But, you know, you could still do, let's say you had forty thousand acre land, you could in theory do one acre lots and wind up with a Grand Mesa price point, if, if the, you know, if, if everything made sense.
Without dragging sewer to it.
Yeah, without, you know, if most of it...
And a lot of that land was a lot less.
You know, one acre with sewer probably doesn't, if, if you're gonna spend the money to drag sewer to a property, you're gonna wanna do higher density. You're gonna want fifty, sixty, seventies, and that, that, you know, that, that would make sense, you know? If Chapman Park were to happen, and you have sewer to that location, chances are that the stuff to the west, you know, unless it's got really bad topo and everything, if it would lend, if you got sewer, you were gonna, you would, you would develop it that, that way.
Like, that's a mile, over a mile to sewer.
Right.
Yeah. So, right now, if you wanted to come in and do, I call it the Chapman, but it's owned by the Freo track, it goes all the way over to Round Mountain Road, if you wanted to do that, you know, you'd probably say that would, the track could lend itself to one acre.
There is some steep topography back there.
It might not in ten years, depending on what happens, if Chapman Park happens...
Any idea how many acres that would be?
Five hundred, six hundred acres.
Okay. So, there's quite a bit out there.
But it's steep. It's, the topography...
It's like a Mace's.
It's big trees.
So, it might have to be...
It's not like the Freo or what you're looking at, the Chapman Parks.
Right.
So, it's gonna, it would...
Be bigger, maybe three acres or something.
It might be a larger lot.
Yeah. Then if you wanna go all the way around...
Well, the Chapman track, if you went and looked at it and drove across it, it'd be real similar to what Grand Mesa, section nine, looks like right now. You know, it's fairly flat, but it's got big trees all over and everything. But it's got topo, and it, it's the backside of my uncle's estate's track backside, you know, it's similar to that. It's got, it's Travis, some of it's Travis County topo.
And so Chapman was three hundred and something acres?
No, that part was. Then there's another five, seven.
There's another five hundred or something.
So, three hundred something acres, so we got twelve hundred homes versus after roads, two-hundred-and-eighty homes?
On five hundred acres?
Yeah. On, on the three hundred acres.
Four hundred, it was probably four hundred something, that's one acre lot.
Yeah. Versus what, Chapman, three or four times that much traffic?
Well, it's just, you have sewer.
That's right.
And sewer's getting closer. There's a development that's bringing it now, right there at San Gabriel in Baghdad.
How far west will it reach?
About there.
Right about there.
So, it's getting to the third of the way there, close to half.
Not quite there.
Oh, no, it's not there.
Am I not right?
Yeah.
So... James, do you have any idea what the, like, the land prices out there would be compared to, like, Liberty Hill, for instance? The land?
Which track are you talking about?
Like Chapman going west, the Freo, I guess.
Yeah, it'd probably be more expensive than Liberty Hill.
Than Liberty Hill.
Well, it's the school district.
You know, they...
Well, and, and the, the bigger question is availability. Trying to find either one, if somebody's willing to let go of, it's, it's getting tough.
Yeah, just like the lot, the track is real expensive, which is just to the east of Great Wood. Yeah, they're, they're, that's a dollar a foot, you know, laying right there. And you skip over, and it's, Chapman Park is much less expensive, you know, it's half that.
What do you need to be, to make it work with one acre lots, let's say?
In, in city of Leander, our typical, and I buy them from the developers, so there's, there's a middleman in there, but we pay anywhere from a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty thousand for a one acre lot. And, you know, you work backwards, you, you know, twenty to forty thousand dollars an acre, somewhere in there, to make it work for a builder.
Oh, okay.
Twenty to forty thousand.
Yeah, that's not retail.
Yeah, that's how, that's cost.
That's cost.
That's cost.
Built one.
Right.
If you, if you look at what Wood Ranch, just to, those, those lots, all cost retail a hundred thousand plus.
Okay.
And what's the market looking like for one acre lots?
Uh, the market is, Great Wood, we're, we're down to, I picked up another builder's home site, so otherwise I'd be out of there, but we, we have twelve lots left, so we'll be in there another year. And Grand Mesa, we're down to a twenty-something home sites left. I'd have to go by and look at our sign on our countdown, how many, how many lots we have left.
It's five thirty, so I'm not sure if you've sold any since you got it, or so...
But it, uh, we're winding, we're winding down of the Leander.
So, twelve to eighteen months' worth of inventory?
Two, I'd say, two years.
Okay.
Two years in Grand Mesa, and a year in Great Wood, to be about built out.
Yeah. So, has most of your, your, your work gone to Liberty Hill and outer boundaries?
Uh, Liberty Hill is, we have three one acre communities there, and...
ETJ?
We're into Jonestown, Marshall.
That's Liberty Hill's ETJ.
So, in this example, the, the area that we're looking at that's on the edge of town, why do we care if they connect to sewer? Like, if somebody wants to develop large lots to the west?
On the western boundary of our city limits.
Because the city limits is just right there.
Right, that, that's a choice.
That's not the city limits.
What's that?
Yeah, it's, that's your property, right? It's not city.
But I think her question...
But I think her question is, you know, the, the acreage that is hugging our city limits, whether it's on the far west or.
Creating a gap.
So, I agree, yeah.
We just, I got water out, a little ways, you know, Apple Springs area.
Yeah.
And you run into even the small tracks after, you want to reset the line, and the three, five acre tracks, whatever. Was he able to bring sewer?
Right.
Just two miles, when you get out there, here away.
Yeah.
Right, that's why trying to jump way out ahead is incredibly difficult to do, to jump far out from infrastructure. If it builds incrementally, it works much better.
Well, that's why they go out there, because the land cost or so, such that they can make the numbers work to build the acreage, so.
Right, so what they're having to do is find places close to county roads or highways, so they don't have to build much road, right close, and having water available.
Yeah. You know, I think the thing is, it's like, and, and look, I know, getting into school districts and, and overcrowding schools, I mean, technically, it's not the city's issue, but it's our issue. We live here, you know? It's, it's our schools. It's our taxes that pay for new schools. And, you know, I, to me, if you can have a, a low density, and what this study does, look at the, the last page of conclusions, I mean, it pretty much was looked at density, and the conclusion is that, across the board, was like, conclusions. Ladd's findings are not harder to interpret. Those who feel that increasing population density will decrease costs to local government are correct, but only at very low levels of population density. Increasing per capita spending as the density of counties rises above two hundred and fifty people per square mile provides important evidence to counter the view, which emerges from engineering and planning studies, that higher density reduces public sector costs. For most situations, more population density equals more per capita cost to government. Since population growth does not result in higher costs, the public issue rises to whether newcomers should be forced to pay extra to live in a community through impact fees.
But is the income and the incremental tax base for property tax, because that chart showed it was so much higher the denser it is, does that offer some relief to offset what it's costing extra in police fire and streets?
Seeing that we only collect, what, a quarter of that?
Well, I look at.
That goes to the city.
I look at Grand Mesa like a cash register that just rings and rings and rings. Thank you, David. Appreciate that. And, just cho-ching, cho-ching, cho-ching. It's private roads. We don't have to maintain them. Provide fire and wa, and water. That's it. It's just a cash register.
I just feel like we're never going to get the restaurants in stock, because they say we're not getting the numbers.
But, but when you also look at it as a, a per acre, a per acre, how much, um, tax income is coming in on these, these larger lots, it, it isn't as much as, as the smaller, dense.
Property tax wise.
Yeah, property tax wise, I'm, I'm not saying, so, so when you're looking at what's.
Get more tax revenue, like that seems.
Well, I'm just saying that, that.
And then think about the sales tax revenue and restaurants. Restaurants, like people who have disposable income, the people that live on one acre or five acre lots have more disposable income than either.
Well, that's why I think we're, we're, we're getting into the, the part of where, maybe, maybe we're trying to do a little bit of social engineering here. Oh, let's make sure we only have acre lots, because.
Well, that's what we're saying, that's based on how much income.
Is, well, uh, from, from what I can tell, from what I can tell, what's, what's going on in Leander at this point in time is land prices have increased to the point where it, for the most part, it's going to make it unaffordable to do acre sized lots. Now, maybe way in the outer boundaries, it's fine, but a little bit closer in, they're a little more expensive, especially.
I think it's going to take care of itself.
I think it'll take care of itself. Yes.
Right.
Well, I mean, look, I go back to when, when Cedar Park's mayor, when Round Rock's mayor had to talk about Leander, what they liked about Leander. Both of them. You guys have executive housing. We don't have it. So, to me, why would you want to inhibit your greatest advantage to getting the corporate companies that want to live close to where their companies are?
I think at this point, as far as everything is developed, whatever change you make, I don't know that it's going to have a significant change on what's happening, just because of land costs and because of what's left.
Yeah.
Right. So, I, I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
And I was, I was looking at, at, especially the changes, even if we, we just go back to what it was before, I'm not sure there's going to be any difference, because, because I was trying to figure out, okay, where, where would they be able to put acre sized lots? Where can they afford to put it? And it really is going to be on the outer boundaries, where it's really cheap.
Oh, absolutely.
So, it's, it's not going to be anywhere closer in, and there's a lot of land there, but that's too expensive to put acre sized lots. So, no matter what we do here, I, I'm not sure. We can go back to the way it was before and take out that one paragraph that's in there.
Yeah.
I, I, it's, I don't think it's going to change anything.
Mayor, I, I agree with you that, uh, executive housing isn't differentiated that we have, that we should promote. I also think we also, you know, want to make sure that we have housing for those corporate employees too, not just.
Absolutely.
I think it's just going to take care of itself.
Uh, yeah. I, yeah, I think if you don't, like, if we didn't have that, it might just develop that way anyway.
Right.
You know what I mean?
But that's what free market does.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, if we can get another Crystal Falls at Chapman Park, I think that's an awesome thing for our city. Low density, doesn't put a lot of strain on already crowded schools out there. That's a good thing. So, anyway.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you have twenty minutes.
Food's still there.
Yes. So, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. Have everybody welcome tonight. Today is Thursday, May second. The time is six oh two, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Leander City Council. This time, we're going to stand for the invocations provided by Pastor Mark Brown. You'll remain standing for the pledges.
Father, we thank you today, God. We give you all the glory, and we give you all the honor. We thank you, God, for this great city, the city of Leander. Father, we thank you, Father, for the leadership that you've put in place, Father. God, your word declares, Father, that in EMI, chapter eight, verse number ten, that the joy of the Lord is our strength, Father. We thank you for giving us strength, Father, in the times of trouble. Strength, Father, God, that when we don't know what to do, we lean on you, Father. Strength, Father, when things are going good, but we need more of you, Father. We thank you, God, that your anointing will rest, will remain upon this house, Father. God, we invite your wisdom. We invite your understanding, Father. You said in your word that you would buke the wind, and you said, peace be still. Tonight, we declare, we rebuke the wind that would cause alterations to your will, your way, and your wisdom, and, and we say, peace be still. God, we invoke your peace that passes our understanding, God. God, on every single council member, Father, let your wisdom and understanding rest on them, Father. And on our mayor, Mayor Troy Hill, Father, let your wisdom and understanding and guidance, God, as he leads this city, God, to the next chapter, God, to the next direction, Father. God, give him clear understanding, Father, just as Joshua looked over, and he looked over at how to take Jericho. God, you said that you stepped on the scene, and you said, he said, are you for us or against us? He said, neither, but the captain of the Lord tells, Father. God, that he will take your side in every agenda, Father. That we leave this place knowing that every vote will be made is of you, Father. That it was your will, it was your way, and it was your wisdom, God. We declared and we decreed that you're the prince of peace, the rose of seren, the lily of the valley, the bright and morning star. You're the center, the circumference, the base, the boundary, the sun, and the substance of what life's all about. We give you all the glory, and we give you all the honor, in Jesus' name. And everybody say?
Amen.
All right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Brown, I bet you have never had anybody fall asleep during your sermon, have you? Thank you so much. All right. Ms. Crabtree, if we could get a roll call?
Councilmember Andrea Neveretti.
Present.
Mayor Portem Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Siler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum. We can do business. At this time, we're going to move to citizen comments. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? All right. So, we're going to move forward to number eight, staff reports.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Um, here we go. So, single family permits, and I don't have a pointer, so go out to April, and you can see that, um, one more than April eighteenth, but year to date, we're almost eleven percent, uh, inside the city, um, over last year. Um, thanks. Interesting thing to note, in all of the month of April, all perm, all permit revenue collected was one point three million dollars. And on May first of this year, we collected one point seven five million dollars on the first day. We had thirty-eight single family permits in one apartment complex, and then a variety of other permits. So, in one day, we significantly exceeded the revenue in April. So, don't get too carried away with that, because that's all, all budgeted, and it's a little bit too early to see if that puts us far ahead of budget. But it was a remarkable day on May first, a record for one day, permit revenue. But growth is still strong. Um, last year was a very strong year, and we're almost eleven percent ahead. And as I said, we actually issued thirty-eight single family permits yesterday, and that means that they paid for and picked them up. So, that's a very strong, uh, start to May. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So, Mr. Willis, I think you're up next. Those are awesome numbers, though.
Excuse my voice. I've got a little bit of a sinus infection. But I wanted to go over a couple of things tonight. Let you know, we're hitting tra, we're right in the middle of travel season. To give you an idea, we're, right now, it's just me going. We have about a third less trips, because of Eric not being here and not being able to go. Tomorrow morning, I'll fly out to Los Angeles, where I'll be for a week with, uh, Team Texas and Wilco, uh, doing recruitment out there, North Carolina, Salt Lake City, just going to give you an idea of what's going to happen in June. Um, we did finally hire Eric's replacement. He starts May thirteenth. I'm very happy with Evan Millorn. He, uh, comes to us from the city of Burnett, where he's been about three years. And what's good about that, in a small city, he's got to do a little bit of everything. Um, so he's got a lot of good experience. And, uh, I've been real happy with the, the references he got and people to talk to over there. I, I think he's going to be a great addition. And then, this is something, uh, I was up in Dallas for a, a meeting the other day, and this, and then, and invest, what we invest per job now. First, I want to preface this by saying, I think that's one of the very worst ways to measure your investments, because it doesn't take into account capital investment, doesn't take into account the quality of the jobs. But what I, there were several things in here I thought were interesting. And first of all, uh, the national averages, and you can see when it peaked in two thousand thirteen, as we were coming out of the recession, throughout the nation, we were paying almost forty-eight thousand dollars a job in incentives throughout the United States. By two thousand seventeen, the last numbers we got, that's down to seventeen thousand, and that really reflects, uh, very healthy national economy, in that you don't have, the competition's not quite as bad as it once was. Um, Leander, over the last four years, I went back and, and went over what, did the numbers on ours. And we, uh, for the pro, the bigger projects, we pay about, when it's all said and done, about sixty-eight hundred dollars per job, and the smaller ones, about seventeen hundred. Uh, again, those, those are the ones that are coming in batches, where they have fifteen to maybe thirty jobs. Um, and, uh, then the other comparisons there, you see, Apple, uh, the Austin incentive package was about eight thousand dollars per job, when that was all said and done. Uh, went back and got the San Antonio Toyota plant. Uh, but then, what I thought was really interesting, Greensboro, North Carolina, and what that reflects is, Greensboro, North Carolina has to work a lot harder and pay a lot more than what we get, we have to do in this area. Eight thousand dollars a job incentive for a company like Apple is very low. What that tells you is the most important thing going right now is the quality of the talent you've got. And that's what the whole Austin region's working off of right now, is we can get by paying a lot less in incentives and that kind of stuff, because people want to be here. But I thought that was really interesting. I didn't realize that the peak had been that high, until the guy doing the, the presentation showed us that. And finally, uh, the, uh, Modern Business Show finally aired a couple of Saturdays ago. I didn't see it. I was on my way driving, but, uh, and it'll replay several times. It's forty major markets where it was throughout the city. If you want to see the whole thing, it's on the website. It's about a six-minute, uh, portion of that show. Mike Ditka hosts it. Uh, we were pleased with it. Uh, we got the president of St. David's to come, and, uh, several other people were interviewed, but we thought it came out pretty well. A good thing about it is we get the, the film, so we can have it on our website, and we can use it in recruiting. We'll have, like, uh, when we set up a booth, we'll have a loop of it going all the time. So, it's a nice little promotional piece, and probably got us out to audience. Like I say, the forty major markets in the United States, it was broadcast to. We, that, that's a good bunch of PR, and it was really complimentary of the town and all that, so.
How are you going to be able to gauge how effective that was for us? I'm sorry.
Well, I, to tell you the truth, I haven't gone back, but what I will do, uh, when I get the time, is go back, and what I look, and I do the same thing with all of these trips we take. I go back and check the website and see if we have a spike in, in visits. So, what I need to go back is look at that Saturday, when it broadcast, and then see if Saturday and Sunday, we had a spike in, in, uh, visits to the website. And that's how we decide if things are worthwhile, and, including these recruitment visits and, and trade shows and that kind of thing. If, uh, I don't see a significant spike, we probably won't go back. Yes, ma'am.
About how much traffic do you see every month to the website?
Uh, it's between, uh, between eighty and two hundred visits usually, because we're a very narrow target market that we've got. Um, I'm disappointed if it's under a hundred, but if it's over two hundred, that's kind of an anomaly. I want to know what, what calls that.
Visits in general or unique visits?
That's unique visits.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you, by the way, for your help with it. All right. I think that's all I've got this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you feel better.
All right, Mr. Tummens?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me here this evening. Uh, some great things coming up the month of May. We love this month. Um, tomorrow night, bring everyone out, your family, to, uh, movie in the park, Wreck-It Ralph, and the inter, uh, takes the internet at Bloodsaw Park, starts about dusk or right around the dark, uh, time. Of course, our lifeguard classes are, are continuing as well. Um, we have active adult trips this, this month, going to Homestead Heritage, um, and then, uh, going to Giddings, Texas as well. Second Sunday Art Day at the library on the twelfth, uh, from two to four PM. Think, uh, that's enjoyable for everyone to come out. Our pool opens this month, and it's going to be incredible. Our splash pad just opened this week, so we're, we're good with that. Uh, Mason Days coming up on June first. I, I did go into June a little bit, because our next, after the next council meetings, not until after June first, so I wanted to share some of those things with you. Mason Days, uh, sort of a throwback to our heritage culture. Um, come out, and I'm looking for a blacksmith. So, if you know somebody that's, does some blacksmithing, let me know. Um, and then, of course, we have our end of school bash, a lot of food. Uh, there's, um, inflatable, swimming, and then, of course, that wrap up that, that, with a movie that night, Hotel Transylvania Summer Camp. And then, I think all of you received a poster, or at least three posters. Uh, we're looking at collaborative advert, advertising, so if you get the opportunity, uh, take a couple out, keep one for yourself, put it in your car, and, and share with others about Liberty Fest. Jason Bolin, Mike Ryan, but, uh, one of the things that we are really, uh, we like to hang our hat on is it's, uh, it says, "One of the largest fireworks display in central Texas." We, we think it's the largest and maybe the longest, uh, but, uh, so that's something we can always hang our hat on too. So, um, thank you, and any questions? All right.
Always a great time.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Even when it rains.
Even when it rains.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Tummens. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Good. Um, okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
I don't know who's going to do that for now.
I know.
We'll have to practice with that red button. We'll have to practice with that red button.
Will the meeting actually adjourn?
Maybe.
Right.
Okay, we're going to move to 14. This is a public hearing with no action. We're going to conduct the first public hearing on an ordinance granting, granting to the Peternalis Electric Co-op. Its legal representative's successors lessies and assigns certain powers, licenses, rights of way, privileges, and franchise to construct, maintain, operate, and use a transmission and distribution system in the city of Leander to provide electric utility service and providing a process for resolving violations of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. The city's current franchise agreement with Peternalis Electric was approved in 1998. It was a 20-year agreement, so it expired last year. Since that time, we've been operating, they have been operating under the existing terms and conditions, but over this time, we've been negotiating with their staff to update the, the ordinance to make it more comprehensive. The first ordinance was a page and a half, and so the new ordinance hopefully tightens up a lot of gray areas that will resolve conflicts in the future. A number of things in the, in the proposed ordinance is the franchise fee is currently 2%. That would go to 4%. The city collects approximately $690,000 a year from PEC on, on that 2%, so that would, that would double, but it would escalate over time as we add more electric consumers. The other significant change that this franchise ordinance addresses is development within the TOD, because that will be a much more urban, dense, limited right-of-way, limited room to, to put in standalone public utility easements, which is PEC's preferred method. They don't like to be put in a situation where they may have to relocate their facilities, so they don't like to be in the right-of-way if they, if they don't have to be. But, so we've worked out some compromise in there. And then, there are a couple of clarifications in the, in the draft that, that you have, that we will bring back to you tonight. One is in Section 2 regarding the term. The term is a seven-year plus two five-year renewals. The language seems to infer that PEC is the only one that gets to choose whether it's renewed, but it was, it was meant to be a mutual, either the city or PEC could opt to exercise the five-year renewal, so we'll clean that up. And then, the second change is in Section 9, just to clarify, Section 9 deals with, PEC would not be subject to other fees and charges from the city, but that's not a carte blanche exception. They just don't want to be charged for doing work in the right-of-way, which the franchise covers, but, you know, other situations, they would be like any other business that would have to permit and pay fees. So, those are no substantive changes in terms of what has been discussed, but the language needs to be cleaned up between now and the second, second reading. So, I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. This is no action, but I did have a question for you, since you sat down. So theoretically, you said a city could not renew. Does that happen? I mean, like, what do you, do you have people bidding for this kind of stuff, like wanting to come in and take over?
Well, that is a good philosophical question of what happens if a public utility, if you can't come to an agreement on terms? And I'm going to look over to our, our city attorney, but, you know, I don't know what you do, but you have to reach some agreement.
Okay.
But it would be difficult, I think, to.
I didn't know if they move around, like, if there's ever a time that you have PEC and then that, you know, people are always coming in to want to take over, you know, that agreement?
Well, it, our, you, gas franchise with Atmos Energy is that very situation, and it's also up for renewal, and we're just in the very early stages of negotiating with them. But the original ordinance with, is with, in 1997 or '98, it was Lone Star, and then it was In Search, and then it was Atmos. So, it does allow to be assigned to a future buyer, but if another electric provider was legally able to come into the city, which they're not at this time, because PEC has the, the CCN for this area, but if, if it were an open market and somebody else wanted to come in, they would still have to come to us for, for a franchise.
Right.
I think it's important to remember that PEC's the, what they call the wires and sticks, they're the distribution. So, they, they buy electricity and sell it, and it depends on where you are in the state. Say, in the metroplex, there's a wires and sticks company, and there might be 50 different generators that, that you can buy from, but the power goes through the same lines.
Yeah.
But since we're in PEC's territory, they're the wires and sticks company and provide the electricity as well.
So, those other companies, that's like...
You don't have a choice when you live in PEC.
It's like the bureaucratic rate, or whatever the service rate is, those are negotiable, so sometimes you can get less electric cost by going with, with one of these third-party services. Is that what that is?
Right, and you can't do that in, with PEC.
Okay.
We, we don't have choice, and so if you live in electric cooperative, which there's a number of them around the state, or if a city's providing it, like Austin, Garland, Denton, there's a number of cities that have electric utilities, or Georgetown, you don't have choice either. So, just depends on where you live.
Okay.
I have a question. Do we know what other cities are getting for their franchise fee? Is 4%? How do we know that it's not, everyone else is getting 20%?
I've not heard of, of any that large, but we did survey our, our neighbors, and Hutto, Taylor, Round Rock, or, and Kyle are all at 4%. Actually, Kyle's 4.5%, and I'm sure how that happened, but, and then Cedar Park is a formula-driven fee, but it also is expiring in next year, so they are starting their, they're preparing to start their negotiations with PEC. Their formula currently equates to roughly 2%. Georgetown, as Mr. Cagle mentioned, they're a city-owned utility, so they have a little different formula. It's 7% of the base charge and then 3% per kilowatt hour. I don't know what that averages out, but 4% is, we also had some, some outside consulting help in, during this process, and, and she informed us that, in her experience statewide, 4% was, was more normal than 2%. But definitely, in our neighborhood, 4% is more common than 2%.
And then, my last question is, is this franchise agreement, is this where we could negotiate and address the issue of burying those lines as our ordinance requires, and every developer has to, but PEC's adding lines and they're not burying them?
Yes, it is discussed and addressed in this ordinance. I'm going to rely on Ms. Science if, if I get this wrong, but generally, PEC is not extending new infrastructure because they want to. Usually, they have a, somebody else's that's, needs the, the, the new infrastructure, and so that person is paying to have those lines buried. They are more in the, the maintenance and replacement of existing infrastructure, and they do not want to, when they need to replace existing infrastructure, than to put that underground.
Of course, they don't want to, but like on Crystal Falls, they called it maintenance and repair, but they added three new poles and added extra lines, but they still classified that as maintenance and repair.
Yeah. Paige, do you remember? It was discussed a lot.
I'm looking for the section in here. We, we have some language in here that requires going underground, but there is, there are some exceptions that were negotiated, and those exceptions relate to when there's upgrading of existing facilities, when there's a need to have parallel redundancy for the lines, and when there is, when they come off of a substation and are going underground, there's a need to have some above-ground facilities in, in that situation. So, there were, in the discussions, there were discussions about when going underground is, is, is either not feasible for them to do or poses other issues. So, those were negotiated points and discussions during the, during the negotiations, and we've identified those provisions in here.
So, do you anticipate them burying any new lines? Or the replacement and maintenance where they're actually adding lines, because they're adding poles, so?
Well, if, if they're upgrading existing facilities and there's a need to add a pole to an existing, they're going to stay above ground in those, in those instances. There's some additional information that I would make you aware of related to how this negotiation went. That's more in the line of legal advice, and so I'll send that to you all separately, and you can have it in front of you four when you take this up again.
Thank you.
Sure, because I'll provide you complete information.
Ms. Science, while you're up here, Section 17, Confidential Information, says, "To the extent allowed by law, including the Texas Public Information Act, the city agrees to hold in strict confidence any non-public information," and then it goes on. What would be considered non-public information with a utility doing business with the city?
They would have to assist us with some of that, but similar, I would imagine that, so when we get a request that may impact some of their information, we would send them a notice that we've received it, and then they have the opportunity to brief the Attorney General's office on what may be private information. What comes to mind, which would be similar to city's utility information, is that utility customers can request certain information, be confidential. I would imagine they have similar provisions for electric utility customers, to the extent we may have that information within our possession, that may be an example of something that could be confidential.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other issue there might be, if we were to audit them, which we have the ability to do on the franchise fees, then we would get certain information about the prices they pay for the electricity they buy that could be confidential. I think that's another area that could be.
Yeah, and then some homeland security protections for facilities, infrastructure, safety against terrorist attacks, yes.
And how often do we audit them in this agreement?
In my time here, we've done one audit, which was five or six years ago.
Okay.
There are firms you can hire that will basically, basically do that on a contingency basis, so.
And are they timely with paying us our franchise fees?
Yes, they're, they're very good.
Was that 4% budgeted this year, or was it just 2?
No, it, it was budgeted. We discussed this at the summer retreat.
Yeah, I remember the retreat. Okay. I couldn't remember if we had.
And we're not going to quite hit the mark, because we had hoped to have this approved by now, but the big sticking point that was just brought up was that, were the discussions on what's underground and when things have to go underground that was, has been a sticking point for quite some time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move to Item 15. This is public hearing with action. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case 19-TOD-CP-002 to adopt the Hill Country Bible Concept Plan on one parcel of land, approximately 19 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R522995, generally located approximately 2,000 feet to the west of the intersection of US 183 and San Gabriel Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Hi.
This is a public hearing for the Hill Country Bible Church Concept Plan. This is the first step in the subdivision process in pursuit to Section 212.005 of the Texas Local Government Code. Approval by the municipalities required, since they're not requesting any variances. This concept plan includes 19 acres, and the proposed development is for a church. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval last week at their meeting, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss and consider action.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Never Ready with a second, I think, by Councilmember Sederquist.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Ms. Griffin? When we're talking about a future transportation plan to expand San Gabriel, how much right-of-way do we have on San Gabriel to expand the road? Do you know?
I need to ask engineering.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
I have another quick question, and that is, where the entrances are, how far away from the property boundary is that? I'm just looking at the neighbors.
Those arrows are conceptual, so we're going to work out the exact location at the next step.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry, on the 110 feet of right-of-way? You're okay. Is that additional to the road that's there now, or is that including?
That's including the road now. When they did the first two of all four lanes, they bought enough right-of-way for the entire section.
Okay.
And they kind of, they've already extended the culverts for the future lanes, too.
Great, thank you.
Will they be doing a TIA? Is that it?
Yes.
TIA?
If their trips per day are greater than 2,000, they would do a TIA, or as P in lieu of a TIA.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any more questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move to Item 16. Conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding zoning case 18-TOD-Z-031 to amend the Tylerville PUD planned unit development with the base zoning district of LC2A and GC2A, generally located to the southwest at the intersection of San Gabriel Parkway and US 183, 8.92 acres. WCAD Parcel R568378, legally described as Lot 2, Block A, Tylerville Commercial, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
This is a, a public hearing for an amendment to the Tylerville Commercial Planned Unit Development. You can look at the exhibit on the screen. They're only amending parcels 1 and 2 of the PUD, parcel 3 is remaining the same, so these changes only apply to the remainder. That corner is currently under construction. They are proposing amendments for the future development that would include changing the building orientation. So, when you look at this exhibit, the previous PUD required that all the buildings were oriented towards the creek, and this would allow them to, the option to still face San Gabriel Parkway, but they can still have the additional parking in between the building and the street. They are also proposing to remove the riparian corridor regulations, so this would be consistent with our current ordinance standards, and they are clarifying the setback requirements by removing the maximum setbacks. The staff did recommend approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval last week. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right, the public hearing is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss and consider action.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Pro Tem Stevenson with a second by Mr. Seiler. Any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question. Do you happen to know how much land they recovered with the new riparian? Okay, I'm sorry, I should have asked that before.
They did recover some land.
Yeah. They're happy with it, huh? Okay, good. Well, y'all probably know how much they recovered. Okay. Enough, right? Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we're going to move to our regular agenda. We're going to move to Number 17, discuss and consider action on an award of bid to Workman Commercial Construction Services, LTD, for the construction of Fire Station Number 5 in the amount of $4 million. for the construction of Fire Station Number 5 in the amount of $4,011,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Welcome. Is this a first?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. How are you all this evening? So in October of 2018, the city issued COs for the design and construction of Fire Station 5. Fire Station 5 has been planned and designated to serve the northwest section of Leander that includes Treviso, Grand Mesa, and Crystal Falls areas, which you can see up there on the map. The project was initially designed as a joint fire EMS station. However, after conversations with Williamson County officials, an alternative plan is being developed that would involve the construction of an EMS station at Fire Station 2 on Crystal Falls Parkway. Remaining funds from the 2018 CO would be used for that expansion. A detailed cost estimate for construction of that EMS station is not available at this time. In January 2019, a solicitation for construction of Fire Station 5 was issued with two bays and a three-bay design as an alternative bid item. The design of Fire Station 5 also includes a small police substation. The purpose of the substation is to allow patrol officers the ability to utilize an office and restroom facilities closer to the area that they patrol rather than have to return to police headquarters. The solicitation was a competitive sealed bid. The complexity of constructing a new fire station warranted the construction of not only price, but also project team experience, previously completed fire stations, site security measures, delivery timeline, and capitalization ability. Seven vendors were notified directly of the solicitation. Six were hubs. Excuse me, seven bids were received. Included in your packet is the evaluation matrix staff used in determining the recommendation. After evaluation, Workman Commercial Construction Services provided the highest-scoring submittal. I do want to bring to your attention that the two-bay design is being recommended for budgeting submittal. We are not going to use a three-bay proposal. Additionally, LCR water management guidelines may require a detention pond on the site. Analysis is ongoing and may result in a site work order change. Staff respectfully recommends that council award the bid to Workman Commercial Construction Services for the construction of Fire Station 5 in the amount of $4,011,000. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll motion to approve.
The public hearing... Oh, I'm sorry, we're regular. Sorry.
It's not a...
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a second. Is there any more discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I understand that you went to two bays because of budget, but how did that get determined? I assume that you all felt there was a need for three bays.
So with the retention pond and also with the EMS station being moved and EMS being part of the CO, we decided to use that as a cost savings.
And so EMS is going to go?
Fire Station 2.
That's over on Crystal Falls, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we're not talking to Travis County about putting one over in Treviso?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So the remainder, this doesn't expend all the funds, so this project at the two bays, well under budget, but we still have to make an addition to Fire Station 2 on Crystal Falls for the ambulance that Williamson County is going to provide, and that's where the funding will come from the CO as well.
And so that goes to my question. So the CO was for 6.4 million. And how much has already been spent on the architect, the design?
I don't have the exact numbers. I can get them to you. I want to say it's around $400,000.
Okay, great. And so as far as this four... Sorry, I need my glasses. This four-million-dollar request, is there, outside of a detention pond, is there any other request that might come for funding, or is that the whole picture?
So the initial... Let me get my notes, sir. The initial CO was for $6,410,000. Out of that was the purchase of Engine 5 and Brush 5, which totaled about $935,441. Right now, we know that we're going to have to put in probably a retention pond, and we know that we have EMS Station 2.
Okay, so you will...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. All right, we're going to move to 18. Discuss and consider action. Selecting dates and times for city council to score and interview respondents to the comprehensive plan update consultant services request for qualifications to determine award of solicitation, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with the selected respondent and present for city council approval.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Joyce Simonton. I'm your General Services Manager and Purchasing Agent. You will recall that we have issued Solicitation 19019 for your Comprehensive Plan Update Consulting Services. That was issued on March 14th. In addition to our standard release points, 55 firms were notified directly of this solicitation. 26 of them were hubs. Four responses were received. Your respondents are Verdunity, Half, Gensler, and Design Workshop. The purpose of this evening's item for discussion is to, per your request, schedule those interviews. The initial request was for staff to shortlist the respondents to three firms. Seeing as how we have a total of four, perhaps you'd want to interview all four. So we're looking at calendars, hopefully tonight, so we can get this scheduled for you.
Is that unusual to send it out to 55 and get four?
Do you know, Mr. Mayor, my process is to notify as many vendors as I can locate, and it is not unusual.
Really? Are they... And I don't want to put you on the spot. Are they Texas-based?
Yes, they are Texas-based. Some of our databases could be accessed nationally, but my focus is Texas-based, yes.
Okay.
Now, the process we typically handle is, like, you would go out, you'd set that out, they would turn those in, and then you would go through your purchasing scoring process, right? And then bring your recommendation back to council.
Correct, that is our standard process, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're deviating a little bit. Yes.
Have you already received all of the documentation from each of these four?
We have. We have received the documentation. In fact, a flash drive has been prepared for each council member. City Secretary, thank you, has those. So that will be passed out to you this evening. Sorry, I skipped that part, Dara. You have all four responses on that flash drive and can begin your review and evaluation in advance of the interviews. That's my understanding of what we're working towards.
Sorry, is there a time constraint on this? Like, we have a deadline that has to be done by a certain section?
Not necessarily. There's no pricing component here, so no one's holding a price. You've got some flexibility. I wouldn't think you'd want to let it stretch out too long, you know. They've compiled teams that they're recommending to bring forward to you, so you'd... Yeah.
At our next meeting, we're seating at least two new council members. So my suggestion would be that if there's not an issue with timing, that perhaps we hold off and get their schedule and let them review.
I agree. I'll make a motion to postpone for not the next meeting, but the following meeting.
Okay, not just the next one.
Well...
We just need calendars.
Okay.
Because we're coming into summer, my thinking is people are going to be traveling.
So the only discussion we're going to have is pick a date?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, yes, I'm sorry.
So bring it back on May 16.
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion is second to postpone until May 16. All in favor?
Appreciate it.
Passing unanimously. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Right, at this time, we're going to move to Number 19. Discuss and consider action on Task Order KFA-42 with K-Freeze and Associates Incorporated for Professional Services for Falcon Oaks wastewater preliminary engineering for a total authorization amount of $74,950,000 and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Hi, Terry.
This is the first of two engineering proposals on this topic. This is the preliminary engineering to bring wastewater to Falcon Oaks. This is part of their annexation agreement that we would extend the lines through this area. The total length at this time is a little difficult to determine, and we thought we would get a better price than design if we went through some of the preliminary process first. The preliminary engineering will include the preparation of a preliminary engineering report, construction cost estimate, and preliminary plan and profiles. Let me know if you'll have any questions.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So are residents going to have the option of connecting to wastewater, or are we mandating that they all connect?
I think it's the option.
It's the option, and obviously if someone has a septic tank and it's working, they're probably not going to want to spend the money to tie on. But we do expect there's going to be a lot of change out there, and if someone tears down and builds new, if they're building new, they'd have to tie on. And 99% of the time, they'd want to.
Okay, and then for those that are having septic trouble that need to tie on, what is the cost that we are putting on them?
Part of this project will be to identify that. It's hard to know now, depending on where their septic systems are located. And I think in some of these lots, they may have been subdivided and multiple septic systems on there, and so that's part of the preliminary engineering process, just to kind of make sure we understand what it is and identify the cost.
Is it built out, or are they still building it?
There's combo of everything, probably.
Have you been there?
Not forever. Is it? Is it still building?
There's probably a vacant lot or two here or there, and there's some mobile homes. Sometimes somebody will move off and then build a stick-built structure there. So there's just a variety of things going on out there.
It's a redevelopment area.
Okay.
So my question was, when was that development agreement made for us to extend the wastewater line?
This was an annexation agreement.
Annexation.
What year was that?
Robin, do you know?
It was one of those five years.
It was before I got on council. It was, yeah. It was previous council.
The time... Isn't it five years?
No.
Or 10?
Two years.
No, 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 no. This was one that timed out after 10, right?
No.
No. State, I think I read, correct me if I'm wrong, state law says two, two and a half years, but the city can request an extension to four and a half years. Is that correct?
I'm not talking about the water. I'm talking about just the time it took before it became effective, the annexation became effective.
So they signed a development agreement?
Well, this is one because of the number of residences that live there. We had to enter into a development agreement with them. If I recall, we annexed them, but then we signed the agreement with them that set in timelines for when the water was going to be improved and when the sewer was going to be put through there.
And in that case, the city's put in the entire bill?
Yes.
For this project, yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry, my memory is foggy on it because it... Pardon me, it did happen before we were here, and we just got the recap.
If you're asking about the deadlines for the water wastewater?
I think the first question was, when was it annexed? I think when we did it, it was immediate, but then we enter into a timeline of when services have to be provided.
Right, yeah, this was done on a three-year annexation schedule, so we'd have to look to the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more. Going back to them tying into the wastewater is optional. That does not expire, right? If somebody stays in their house for the next 20 years and doesn't want to tie in?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Never Ready with a second by Mr. Seiler. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we're going to move to Item 20 and maybe get out of here in less than an hour. Record. Discuss and consider directing the city secretary's office to utilize the city's email archive server to access the mayor and city council's city-issued email accounts to search for information responsive to open records requests.
Okay, tonight, we actually have the IT guys here to explain how this works. So if Paul can come up... He can explain the technical details behind all this.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to go over the basics of it. So basically, a copy, when the email comes into our server, a copy of it is sent to the archive discovery server. Anything sent overseas is sent to it, and it's archived there. And it gives the ability to give us multi-search capabilities for... Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. To support complex audit and discovery exercises, which helps reduce our time for responding to discovery requests.
Why did that just begin in September?
There was nothing in place before, and I pre-budgeted for it last FY, and it was implemented as of September 1 of last year.
Thank you. So then why was it, what's it now, six, seven months before it's come here for approval?
I can answer that. It just never occurred to us that it would be an issue because it's all public information, and this was a way to search, identify, and make sure it's completed. It's the best practice, the best way to comply with the law, so...
Right, but why wasn't this brought to council back in September?
I don't think it has to be. I think Councilmember Stevenson asked for it to be.
Okay, that adds more confusion to what I'm asking. If we had the software back in September, and was there another reason why you added this software besides archiving emails for public information?
Well, actually, in IT world, it helps because we have what's called data at rest. Emails, there's so many emails coming in nowadays, and we call it data at rest where it takes a lot to store it. And this is a good way to help reduce that burden.
So it was just for archiving data?
That would be the main, I'd say, the main goal.
But it's also the searchable database is what made it so attractive because now you put keywords in, and you've all done it.
Yes.
You get a massive amount of emails that aren't even germane to the search. This does it very specifically.
That's correct. This system helps when it ingests in there. It indexes it and helps with multi-level searches and tagging capabilities to support complex audit and discovery exercises.
I can see where that's extraordinarily useful for very mundane requests, but for requests that are a little more in-depth, where sometimes the emails need to have almost a backstory to them so that they can be excluded for the AG, how do you handle that? Since you don't know the...
That would probably be more of an open record request question.
Dar will assist me with this. The answer, because she would be the initial receiver of the information. Your city secretary is experienced and has worked in government for a while and is familiar with what the Public Information Act requires and what exceptions may apply. And so she would be the initial person that would run the search and produce records that were relevant and pertain to an open records request. To the extent there's anything in there that may be subject to an exception, then those would be given to the city attorney's office. We would review and determine whether there needed to be an exception requested from the Attorney General, or if there were questions about whether the information was even subject to the act.
So in that scenario, we're not actually saving staff time because then instead of us producing the documents and saying, "Here are the ones that need a legal opinion," instead our city secretary has to read through each of them?
I don't... Let me... I think I'll defer to...
Well, we're saving staff time on the front end because whatever staff member's involved right now, it takes hours and hours to get those emails and then give them to the city secretary. So the front end is where the labor is saved. On the back end, when the city secretary has to look at the records that are produced, that stays the same.
So would it maybe be a better option where this is optional, where if I get a request and I don't have the time or I know that there's nothing in there that I have an objection to, I can say, "Hey, you can just pull them off from the server"? Whereas, you know, how it's currently presented, which is that it's just automatically going to be pulled, and I don't know who has access to that database that can just go in and just start reading my emails just because?
The good news is this software is built in with those questions and secure. Let me pull this up here for you. So currently, there's only two accounts that have that ability, what you just asked, and that would be the city secretary and the... and the archive server administrator account.
And that would be you?
Actually, no, ma'am, it'd be our systems administrator.
It says city employee?
I have my staff here tonight. Yes, ma'am.
So I have, I'm sorry. I have a question. Is there any way to import all the past emails?
There could be, but it, we made a clear definition that that was at September first. That way, we know for sure what goes in. If a request comes in, that's in with that time period, it would help ensure that we actually gave everything they wanted. We could ingest previous emails, but it makes it unsure, so to speak.
And so currently, for former council members that are gone and a request comes in, how are those fulfilled?
Currently, before this came along, I implemented where when a person terminates employment or a council person, we take their email account on the server and archive it into what's called a PST file. And it's stored on our, on our file servers in the event someone asks for an ORR. And then it would be given to the city secretary to review, to search.
My concern is that we're duplicating effort because since this only goes back, you know, not even a full year, almost every request that comes through that I have seen are a year, two, or three years.
Yes.
And so in that case, the employee or the council and now the secretary have to go back and search. So that's my concern. I would be much more interested in this if the emails could be, the past emails could be imported in so that we're not duplicating effort or wait to do this until we've got a good three, four years.
That's a good point to end, is that the longer it's in the course, the more valuable it comes for us to use, to use less.
I think I'd like to mention, working in IT for so many years through Leander ISD, what we did is, and I've always operated under the same premise here with city council, as far as any email that comes in to the district's owned server is their property. And they made it very clear to us, any in and out was their property. And as the employee, we were never know, we were never made aware that there were any information requests because those went directly to HR. HR directed the one staff member with those proper credentials that performed those. They brought them back to HR. It went through the attorney for redaction and what was, you know, actually subject to the Information Act. And then those were submitted. So we never, there was never the opportunity for the employee or the in-person to have to dig through their own person, you know, through their emails to supply that. You just, it's public information. So I'm really happy that the city's actually moved to this. I think it, as Mr. Kegel said, it's going to save a lot of staff time on the front end.
But also, you were emailing as a staff member. You weren't somebody who was politically involved where somebody would try to come after your job or paint things in a certain way. Or sometimes, you know, one of mine that got caught up that, you know, I asked for an AG opinion on was a safety issue. It wasn't about what was being requested. I want to know that emails like that are not automatically going to just get released. You know? I like having the option to know when things about me are being requested, what's being requested. And I want to review it so that I can flag safety issues.
I mean, I think there's a way to work that out. I mean, ultimately, the point is a valid one there that the emails that you engage in and create, regardless of where they are, whether they're in a private or personal email account or in a city-issued email account, if they are involving the transaction of public business, then those are public records and the city's got some responsibility for retaining those and turning them over. It's a lot easier to archive those and keep track of those and fulfill those obligations when the city, when the council members are using a city-issued email. And it really helps you manage those issues. If you have a city-issued email and that's for city business, personal emails for personal business. That just really helps divide that.
And I don't do personal stuff in my email. But with all due respect, when you were up here a few minutes ago, you were talking about things that would not be turned over to the public. I believe that we still need to have that capability to filter for those exceptions. And it's nine times out of ten, we don't need them. And searching on the server is fine. I want to make sure that that one time out of ten, we're not endangering someone or releasing something because it helps somebody politically or whatever. I just want to make sure that anybody that touches this archive or has the ability to touch this archive is not doing anything with any impropriety at all or any malice.
I believe your IT director can speak to the protocols that are in place. Yes.
So we mentioned, mentioned there was two accounts only that can utilize that server. There's our role compliances built in to the system. And one of those roles is a compliance officer role. And that has been assigned to our public safety systems administrator, Stuart Smith. And if you'd like to hear a bit more, I'm sure he'd be glad to come up to talk about it if you'd like to hear it.
Sure.
I, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, come on up. I'm sure I'll have one for you, too. Ms. Seines, I had a quick legal question for you. Under the document that y'all just gave us, the legal considerations?
Yes.
Here's one of my more, my bigger concern is as a council member, members, we are personally held responsible and face personal consequences if the information is not turned over. If you're removing us from this, is the city then going to take responsibility for that?
The public information officer, if, if the council approves this or you have a protocol where the city secretary does the word search in the emails and produces information that's responsive and relevant and then turns that over or fails to turn that over, then that's going to be that individual's responsibility. I think that's what you're asking.
So we would not be potentially liable anymore?
So the fourth bullet here, a person responsible for releasing commits a crime, blah, 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 if they fail to do it. So are you saying then my legal liability is then transferred to the city staff person and I'm no longer liable for that?
If you have a person who's designated to do that and is able to access and gather that information and turn it over, then that person's going to be ultimately responsible for it. For there to be a criminal violation, there has to be an intent involved. And so if you're not the person responsible for producing that information, then that removes you and protects you to some extent for liability. If the information is requested from you and you are failing to turn it over and it's public, then that puts you at risk.
Okay, so we're all still at risk until years and years of emails can be added into this database? Because we still have, this doesn't remove the request from us having to search back earlier than September.
But you're going to be building up a database starting with September. And so with respect to emails from September going forward, then if you have a protocol and a process whereby an individual, one staff member is able to gather that information and produce it to then, as to those emails going forward, then you're removed from responsibility in that case.
Right. Can we get an estimate of cost to import the other email, the past emails?
There would be no cost. It would just be, we would ingest what is there currently.
Is there a reason why we haven't already done that?
Yes. I wanted to have a clean system at a start point that we could say that when we use the system between the dates that it's been implemented, that we could pretty much hundred percent guarantee we are giving you exactly what you're asking for in searches.
How is that any different than importing in previous email files?
Well, again, starting from September first, every piece of email sent or received from the mail server would be ingested. And before that, users may have had their own protocols, so to speak, to delete things or remove things.
So this is on the front end of the service?
Correct, correct, on the front end. So I wanted to make sure this system, when we put it in place, we, if the search criteria comes in, starting from September first or any time up to now, that we could ensure that we're giving them everything that they're asking for on the request.
So one of the things we discussed, I think, last time was that you guys might propose a procedure, some rules, regulations, procedures by which we could actually follow all this. Are we?
In regards, I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding.
For example, someone makes a request for the last five years. We actually need some sort of written procedure so that council can review it that says, you know, what happens? A request comes in, we get notified by the secretary. She's going to pull from this date to this date. We pull from this date. She's going to copy us. The logistics of how this program's going to work so that we're all crystal clear.
Got you.
I'm concerned about, you know, the liability risk here.
Why would there be liability?
Well, we might have Dar explain the records retention schedule that we'll implement with this.
And the way I understand, when there's a, sorry, when there's a request, you know, Dar's going to use the system to go pull everything and then legal and make sure everything's redacted. And then, like if it was on me, Dar would reach out, say, Andrea, this has been requested on you. And this is the package, this is everything we found, and this is what's going to be presented. I think that would be a very streamlined process.
But my question is, if it goes back further than six months, then you are also going to have to search your email database and compile everything and then get it back to her. And then she's got to send to you what she found between this date and this date.
And that is only until, as Paula said, that what's, that's, you know, keeps going from September on. As time passes, our stuff, you know, previous to that, the ingestion is going to be irrelevant.
It's more work for us, but future councils.
But future councils, it's going to be so easy for them.
Absolutely. But I guess my question is, do we have any idea what the average length of time people make requests for open records? How many years back?
I don't know that there's, we keep data like that. But I think the question that I raised for Dar, there is a records retention schedule. Depending on the type of record it is, there is a timeframe that you can, or required a maximum timeframe you're required to keep it in.
Oh, what is that?
The maximum time period for correspondence would be four years. There's a two years and there's an AV, depending on what it is. We have this system, the email retention setup. It's the longest, which is four years because it cannot distinguish between a policy and a contract versus an internal request for a meeting, which is an AV. So we have requested for the purging of all the records on the system, email retention of four years. But there's three levels, which is called routine. There's policies in general, and then there's AV. So depending on what type of record it is, which, whether it's AV, two years or four years.
And that's based on the Library of Congress?
Yes, the Texas State Library. And that's what the council has adopted.
So I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So let's play hypothetical, right? So it is a really bad recession like '08, '09, right? And so, you know, the legislature's capped our ability to raise taxes and now income has fallen off. And so, you know, there's talk about budget cuts through the city, right? So what protection is there for somebody in the city going to the administrator and saying, hey, can you look through emails and see if there's talk about budget cuts?
That's a good question, sir. Now, I refer that over to Stuart Smith, our compliance officer in regards to this application.
Okay.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, the system has an audit log that can't be modified. My role is to review that audit log for everything, from people trying to attack the system to people running searches they shouldn't. The system keeps all that information as to who did what searches, who logged into the system. And my role is to go through and make sure that the audit log, you know, anything from hackers or anything else that would come up is part of my information security role with the city.
Would you be able to devise a report to give to council, whether it's a monthly report at the end of the month? Just to say, here's a report.
I could go in our FBI every week.
Ceterquest, and this shows you that nobody went in your, that there were no hacks or no whatever.
Nobody's just reading our email for fun.
So my only concern is, is this is an information security audit log.
But you could do it just for ours, right? Just for our own individual email?
So.
I think where he's going to go with this is, he's not going to want to produce the report because it has information that is sensitive in that if it were to get out and someone who's got IT knowledge could look at that and they would be able to use that to get into your system.
Just the access log is all we're talking about.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm a little nervous without being able to monitor it.
I've got a plan, I've got an answer for you. So there's a couple of options. One is if you want to see a report, you now have, since I believe 2015, you've got the ability to review this information in executive session. So it's protected. You can discuss it in executive session. It's not going out in an email form, which is, makes it susceptible to getting out inadvertently or someone hacking an email. So that's an option. A second option is simply if you're interested in what's the answer as opposed to what does the report show? The answer, the, you could ask for, has the email been accessed by any unauthorized persons? Yes or no? It's a yes or no as opposed to here's the log with all the technical programming data that someone could use to harm your system. And if I say something wrong?
That's good.
If I'm saying something wrong, he can tell me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the second question is for you. And that is, rather than having the city secretary do that, why wouldn't you just have those emails? These are all emails according to the ORR. Why wouldn't you just send that to the person then?
Send what to the person? The open records request?
These are the emails that are subject to the open records request that was made.
So you're talking about the authorized person because you're keeping that number very low for security purposes, doing the search and then pulling the data and saying, here's what's produced.
Because then I get to make the decision about whether I want something to go to an AG rather than the city secretary.
And that's absolutely what I don't think needs to be our choice. I think it's, it's public information in the full.
Well, absolutely.
It's transparency.
Then why does the, why does the AG?
Just because we want to.
You're not even going to be here, so it's really easy to make those decisions.
My email is open to whoever wants it.
Emails that are internal have been released to people outside of this dais three times in the last several months. So, yeah, I'm concerned about who's going into my email because things like to get painted a certain way and it's election season and people are ugly. I know I've had my integrity attacked all week. I don't really need somebody in my email. If we want to fight it with, you know, whether or not it's valid, let's just put it out on the table.
There's been several instances where the information that was submitted, I had to give you background information. I needed to tell you why this information really doesn't fall under the open records and then you submitted it. If, if the council members who are ultimately legally responsible for that are cut out of the process, that's what concerns me. And secondarily, it doesn't sound to me like we actually have a written process. And I thought that's what we had requested, was a step-by-step written process, how long we have to keep certain emails. That's what I think is missing here. And just giving a carte blanche approval is what's making people a little nervous.
I would also respectfully say, if there weren't exceptions given by the AG, then it wouldn't matter. But there are exceptions given in the law. So if they're not important, then why do they give them? They don't just say any, they don't say exactly what you're, what you're saying it should be. They do give exceptions. Absolutely, correct?
We've had several just since we've been.
So if they.
But we're still following the state's guidelines as far as.
But if they didn't want to grant exceptions, then why did they allow exceptions? I don't understand the logic.
We're not saying, don't release emails. We're saying, let's make sure that this is done properly and not for anybody's gain. We want to have eyeballs on the emails and we want to know when our emails are being accessed. And I don't think that's a horrible thing to request. I think it's incredibly reasonable. Not just for those of us that are sitting up here today, but for ever sitting here in a year or ten years. up here today, but for ever sitting here in a year or 10 years. We should all know that there are people watching the watchers.
I have always been, I've been here for 10 years, more than that, and I've just always operated. Any email that comes in and out, I've just always assumed it's public information.
Absolutely, but you don't always have control over what's coming in. I receive many emails of complaints, please fix this, but oh, by the way, I don't want my name out there for retribution.
Well, I think the public knows if they're reaching out.
No, they don't know.
And emailing their elected official that that is open to public information.
Then why are there exceptions?
Right, and why are there AGs?
I haven't heard you answer the question, why are there exceptions given?
What about text messages?
We're talking about the city's email servers.
What about text messages? Are those open records?
It's within council's discretion to set a, a protocol if that's what you would want to do.
I mean, the law grants exceptions for a reason. One of them was negotiations that we looked at. If you were in negotiations, let's say that it was over a YMCA, right? So we know that, that, for instance, on our bond ballot, it said rec center. We told people it was a YMCA, but not everybody knew it was a YMCA, right? So if we had discussions with somebody about a YMCA and somebody does an ORR to try to find out if it is a YMCA, maybe we don't, maybe there's a negotiation going on and it doesn't need to be public.
The thing is, we don't negotiate as individual council members. We negotiate up here on this dais and we direct the city manager for negotiations. We as individual council people should have no negotiating power with individuals.
So city business is only done with a quorum, correct?
It should just be everybody on the dais, correct?
So when people are asking for things that are responsive to city business, if there's not a quorum involved, you don't believe that should be included?
I don't believe so. Well, if the quorum's not involved.
Well, there's no quorum in email.
There's no quorum in an email.
Right. And so text messages going on during.
So that's different.
That is absolutely different. A cell phone is an individual person's, the mayor's is paid for by the citizens of Leander and that phone line is paid for, so that would be subject.
Absolutely.
His personal one, no.
And so, my personal text messages, yours, if we are discussing city business, you don't think that that's subject to open records?
Guys, we are not discussing text messages. We are discussing emails through a barracuda email server system.
We're talking about information applicable to the ORR. Clearly, we need some legal procedure set in place.
So we've got.
And clarification.
So the agenda item would be the directing of the city secretary on use of the email archive server if the council wants to set a protocol and procedure around that that's within your.
I do find it interesting that we recently talked about charging for ORRs and we were told that they don't take any time whatsoever.
Right.
And tonight, the discussion has included talk about how, oh yeah, it's taken all this time.
No, that's, that's not what you were told. It was, you, you can't charge for the time. Let, let's let Dara answer because we've never said it doesn't take time to do these.
I asked both of you for the time and, and I was told you don't track it.
Right.
And I just said an average. Give me an idea.
We, we do not track time. Open records requests come through. There are very specific ways we can charge and ways we can't. When things are sent out via email, there are no hard copies and we cannot charge. We can charge if I have to go offsite, recover six more boxes, bring them back and be a farther distance than what our packs are, to research manually through records. If you're just coming because we redact electronically, we're not printing records, the records are automatically electronic and all of that. Whether I'm going through emails, and I do have to look at emails because each individual email may have something in the thread of the email that is protected under the act, personal email addresses. There could be a whole series of there, if there's one personal email, I redact it per the act and it has to be. But if we're not printing copies and they're not picking them up, we can't charge because it's done all electronically. So it's not a matter of it does not take time, it's a matter of there are very strict guidelines when we can charge and when we cannot charge. And because most things are done electronically now, we cannot charge for those time.
So, when I had asked the question of TML, they gave me a list of many things that we can charge and actually computer database access can be charged by the hour. And so if there's no charge, then why is, are other neighboring cities, when you go online and you fill out, it's, it's a form you have to fill out, not just send an email. There's several factors by which a charge can be made. When I spoke with Cedar Park and Georgetown about it and Round Rock about it, they, there, there are several other things that I've been told we can charge for other than printing paper.
That's true. With respect to you, I don't know that a search is something that can be charged for, but when you have to manipulate a program data, those are examples of.
And redacting would be manipulating program data.
I don't know the answer to that question.
If it's done electronically, it's not.
So, so going back to my question originally, we've kinda gotten off topic, but the question I asked was, again, she goes through, she finds the emails that pertain to the ORR. She lets, what is wrong with, instead of her going through, she says, council member Sederquist, I have these emails that I think are pertinent to the ORR. Can you look over those and get back to me and let me know if any are subject to an AG request? What is wrong with that?
It's within the council's discretion to set up a, a procedure which allows the council member to review the responsive documents and raise any issues they have.
That sounds like a retreat, I think.
It, it does because I would like a protocol that says when a request comes in to the city, that the council member or staff member is to be notified within X number of days so that we know sooner than, you know, five days before it's due or, or whatever it is. We need a protocol in place. And to address council member Navaretti's question, it seems to me like she doesn't think text messages are subject. I thought that we were instructed they were. So I would like to see a protocol for all open records and how that is to be handled by both staff and council. That would be very helpful for us because we're getting different, different information. All of us wanna be as transparent as we can. I've been sending over text messages. Sounds to me like not everyone is. So, I would like to know what, what the law says and what the protocol is. That would be helpful.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for Sean. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry! Stuart.
Yes, ma'am.
I will remember it now. So, how does access get logged exactly? Is it just every time somebody logs in, does it, you just get a, do you have like a daily report or? Tell me how this works, how you know that everything is on the up and up, the checks and balances.
Yes, ma'am. So, in the barracuda system, and this is built for compliance and not just in the public sector, the barracuda system is in use in SEC-regulated instances where someone has to produce reports, you know, for publicly traded companies, energy trading. The audit log is built in as part of that to look for, for like government review, if, looking if someone's doing insider trading, anything like that. So, when I log in, I don't have the ability to run searches of emails, but I do have access to a panel that allows for access to an audit log that shows every username, when they log in, what they searched for, the search terms, what, and what is returned, and then the IP addresses associated with the login and some other, other information that we use for information security purposes.
So since it logs the IP, would you then be able to tell that if, if, if a login was shared with somebody else or being accessed outside of a city building, would that get flagged?
Yes, ma'am. If the barracuda system logs all the IP addresses, so that would show that it's within the city and we, there wouldn't be an instance where it should be accessed outside of the city.
Okay. And then, you were talking earlier about getting hacked. So is this, I guess this is on the internet, it's not just an internal server that it's on?
It is a cloud system, yes, ma'am.
It's a cloud, okay.
I have some documents here that the, you find it here, I had it written down. The solution implemented, the system here provides secure archiving and when it, and it puts it in at rest.
Is it encrypted?
I'm looking here, I apologize.
Sorry.
No, no stress.
While you're looking, Stuart, see, I got it. Have you found any best practices that are in use by other municipalities that are using the software?
Best practices as to?
Well, like all of the things that we're talking about today, maybe having, you know, a record of what's being accessed and by whom, things like that, how things are, when things get notified to, when, when we're notified, if we're notified, just what other cities or, or government entities are doing, how they're handling, because I'm sure we're not the first people to have these questions.
I, I haven't, I mean, my approach, of course, from the information security side, my, my, my job's to protect the data and make sure that policies are in place from an information security perspective to protect the data and auditing that. As far as response to elected officials and the procedure for who retrieves the email, I, I don't really have knowledge.
Maybe Mr. Preston would be better to answer that, maybe.
That's the other question here, real quick. That the solution, the data is archived in a dedicated tamper-proof repository, ensuring it will be retained securely without risk or corruption or deletion.
It's not encrypted, though?
Correct. But it's in a tamper-proof repository.
What makes it tamper-proof?
There's like firewalls and.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm still confused as to why, when we started this in September, we didn't import all the other emails.
Again, it was just for, I wanted a hundred percent accuracy on what was being ingested. Again, so when we do use a system, if it falls within the date of the ORR, that we could positively give them, give the requester absolutely what they're asking for and positively tell them, say, yes, we gave you everything you asked for.
With certain.
With your search criteria within those dates.
Couldn't we say prior to September of last year, this is the best of our ability and qualify that so that we're not duplicating effort on this?
You could.
Paul, if we, if we postpone this and said, can you come up with a system so that we can have your report, can we see what it would look like, a theoretical report? And then I think also from a legal perspective, to be able to come up, maybe a copy goes to you, maybe when the city secretary comes up with a report of affected emails under the ORR, you know, an email goes to you and me, let's say it was about me, it usually is, and you and I are both notified that these emails we think are subject to this. And then I get to look through them with you and say, okay, here's what I think, what do you think? Do you think this is something that is, you know, something we could ask the AG if, if it fits one of those exceptions?
We can, we can come up with a, we can look and see if there's some examples of what other cities do and maybe that serves as a model and then adjust it to what you determine, the council determines is appropriate. We just, we wanna be mindful of sticking within the timeframes for responding.
Sure.
Timeframes and also I'm thinking the legality because even if it comes back to us and say, say we do do this thing that you suggest where we get the emails and we get to look through them all and everything and we don't wanna share one of them, I mean, if it's responsive to the request and it's legally, we have to produce it.
Currently, we're sharing them.
We already do.
We're just saying, hey Paige, I want an opinion on this one, here's the story behind it. Because if you just have an email without the context, you can paint it any way you want. And that's all that has, has happened. And that's what I'm referencing.
Well, I'm also quite concerned that this was implemented six, seven months ago and we don't have any written protocol procedures of how.
Well, that's what this is for.
I think this shouldn't have had to come to council.
Excuse me. We, we don't have a how-to and a requirement procedures given to council, which clearly there's question about what information is subject to ORR, text messages, et cetera. So, we, we need that in, in writing a procedure, best practices, protocol.
And I don't believe this has been used for producing open records so far, so that can be put into place. And then they've already described the security protocols that are in place.
So can we get that in a document that is a protocol procedure so that we can look at it? And to be very clear legally, what is subject to ORR, like I said, I think, is it Facebook posts, Twitter posts?
That's an ever-changing.
I know that, but we have to put a stake in the ground and everyone needs to be abiding by the same rules.
Well, but this evening, we're only discussing the email retrieval system here that is actually linked to our government, our city government email address. So, I mean, that's something that, that we can, we can make a policy on, but we're discussing this right now.
I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone this and that we have staff come up with what the procedure would be, what it looks like, just so that.
What those logs.
Excuse me?
Sorry, what the logs would look like.
What the logs would look like and also the suggested procedure of how we would get notified and whether, you know, if you want protections, it makes you feel better, we can notify, she can get an email too, you know? But I do find it's funny that people that are leaving are making decisions now, the last day, but we can still give those to the attorney and, you know.
I got two years left and I'm the one that sponsored it, so.
So I'm, I'm.
We can do that.
I'm gonna make a second and I just wanna make the comment that when we had a social media policy, it was much more thorough versus this that has really no policy attached at all. And, yeah, I agree.
I, I, obviously, since I'm one of those people you're referring to, don't have a big stake in this and I don't have a strong opinion, but I'm very confused about some of the comments because I have no idea what emails you're talking about that got shared. So, I just want you to know that. I, I mean, I feel like there's a lot of hostility and some drama back here that.
We don't need to go there right now.
You, you brought it up. I'm just responding to what you said and I'm.
There is a lot of hostility that's up here right now. Yeah, I'm sure it'll clear up in about three days. So, you have a motion and a second.
Wow.
Okay.
I guess that's the bullying.
Like I think, I think that, like the, the bottom line is, it just, we're in a, in a day where information and security is like paramount. It is the most important thing. You can hear 35 commercials in one show about internet security and password security. It just, you know, the, the fact that we don't have any idea to come in like we came in and not know when somebody is accessing this. Now, you may get a report, but we don't. Do you understand what I'm saying? You know, of when somebody accesses the system, you know, theoretically, again, using my example, you guys get a report showing when somebody did, but that doesn't tell me if somebody did, you know what I mean?
We're still legally liable for it.
Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about, it just seems like it's, you know, again, I'll go back to my potential budget cuts as my hypothetical. It just seems like it could happen and I wouldn't know about it. I mean.
So, there's an information security log and I don't have any issue with that being shared. My only concern with the information security log is it contains other things that describe our security posture, other systems we use to protect the city that aren't public, the way those things are configured. A lot of the information that shows in there that helps me diagnose problems or look for anomalies could be useful to an attacker. My concern in sharing that in open session or in an email that is just blasted out, we have no control over it, but as far as showing the audit log in executive session or in another method where the, the particular technical data is what I'm concerned about, who's searching for what, I don't have a, I don't have any dog in that fight. What y'all want is who did what when and he can, he can give you that. We can give you that report.
Well, I understood this also, the component is the open records request. Not, I'm not just limiting it to emails. And I'm also concerned that this only goes back seven months. I would like to have a legal protocol in place adopted by council that says, "Open records requests have access to your texts, your whatever, 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 Facebook Messenger, I don't know what all, I don't Snapchat, I don't know what it is." I would like to know what the protocol is and then what happens when a council member leaves? How are we archiving that information? Are we required to save that for four years after you leave council? There's, the open records request, this just seems to have a lot of unanswered questions regarding the procedure and the, and the risk. We all, I believe honestly, all of us want to do it right and we want to be thorough. But I think right now, not all of us are doing the same things.
That's an attorney question, though.
Well, I was looking at Paige, sorry.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of postponing this till, we can come up with a system, a policy, present it to council, here's the way it would go, here's who would be notified and just what that would look like. I think it's prudent, especially in this situation.
If you postpone, I need dates certain.
We can postpone it till the next meeting?
I would say then two, till we get...
Okay.
I would say a retreat. Sounds like a retreat item.
A retreat.
A retreat?
It's only like two months away.
Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Science, can, can I ask you, how long will it take for you to put together a protocol regarding open records requests? And what that, when a request comes in, what, what areas I have to search? Is it just email, is it text, et cetera? And how far back? And what is the current protocol for saving that data? Is that data that should be imported into barracuda? And since it's taken us six or seven months to even address this after purchasing the software, let's go ahead and address it all at once.
Some of that's going to be technical, some of it's legal.
That's why you got the pros.
We could come up with a proposed procedure that addresses legal issues, I think, within, by not the next meeting, but the meeting after. I'm not sure when your summer retreat is.
Paige, well, you know, I, I think maybe getting lost in a little bit of this and all this discussion is that we're legally obligated to produce anything. We were told that we have to save every single email.
Absolutely.
And because it's all searchable. And we need to remember that, you know, we can't pick and choose what we, we can share when there's an open record request.
Nobody has suggested that.
And that's, that, that seems to be kind of the road that it's going down, though.
Then you're misinterpreting because what we said is we want to watch...
Maybe I am and maybe it needs to be clear.
And we want people that watch the watchers. We don't want people that are just going to have unfettered access to just sit around and say, "You know what? It's Wednesday afternoon. I'm going to read this person's email that I don't like and see if I can find something on him."
Who's doing that?
Nobody can have access. There's only two people that has access.
Just because nobody up here might do it, doesn't mean nobody ever would.
I retract my question because I don't need that, okay?
Great.
Okay, so...
I just think we could let the city secretary start using a process that the IT department suggested put in place for ease of use and have a workshop later, have a workshop and put the policies together on what those are responding to.
We don't have a process.
What's the urgency to do it right now?
That's why I'm saying, then, then have your workshop later.
We're already...
We do a workshop first before we change things.
We can't implement a policy that has not been presented to us.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and we're going to take a vote. That we would postpone it until...
June 6th or May 16th.
June 6th would be, what would be the most likely?
Or the retreat.
We talked about the retreat.
What if you just take no action? And then, you know, you've already said it's going to be on the retreat, so just take no action.
All right. Take no action and we'll put it on the retreat agenda. All right. I'm going to withdraw my motion and I will make a new motion that we take no action.
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four to three. All right. Councilmember closing statements. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was fun.
Have a good weekend.
All right. Any statements, anybody?
We're not going down the line?
Councilmember Navaretti, do you have any closing statement?
Nope. Good night, everyone.
Councilwoman Stevenson does. Joined with, with many people who are actually here tonight with the National Day of Prayer today at the police department. And we're so thankful to Chief, Chief Minton. I almost called you Gardner for a second there, sorry. Chief Minton for allowing us to, to use the multipurpose room there. I, I think it would be good to mention that the theme was love one another. And I'd like to, to expand on that, that, that we're all in this city together. And it's kind of one of those commandments to love one another and that's the greatest of all. And I really hope that people remember that, love and respect. That's it.
Thank you for that. I don't have anything further, but I, I feel like that was a good timely thing to remind us of.
Oh, it's mine. I just wanted to mention, if nobody knew, the University of South Carolina Charlotte, where the shooting happened, in December, one of our own Rouse High School girls was recruited to play baseball. She graduated early, got a full ride scholarship there by the grace of God. Neither she or any of her teammates were involved. But to be so far away from home and to have it hit us in our little tiny town, it was a huge, just reminder that we, we do need to pray for safety and I appreciate our police department and everything that they do. And then, for the fun stuff, last Saturday, we had the bull riding shootout and whoever wasn't there, you really missed out because it was tons of fun. It comes once a year. But on May 11th, we're going, and, and the bull riding shootout sponsor, that benefited Leander High School FFA. And the, on May 11th, the goat roping event will occur at the same place, the South San Gabriel River Park. And that will be benefiting the Rouse High School FFA. And it, and it's just so much fun. So, if you have the opportunity, you need to go there. Thank you very much.
I also want to thank Chief Minton for, for this morning. You know, it was a great opportunity to have community and just kind of restore after, you know, what's been a, a difficult week. So, just thank you for that and also want to just thank all the staff for their hard work tonight. I know there's a lot of stuff going on up here and I just thank all for y'all's patience and, and, you know, being professional about it.
For the first time ever, I got nothing.
First of all, I love you, councilmember Pro Tem Stevenson. I really do. Second of all, it was great. It, it's kind of funny, I went on a sales call later and I'm just talking to the secretary and told her that this morning, I got up really early, thanks to Dara reminding me to get up and go for a 6:45 meeting and she said, "Where was it?" And I said, "The police station." She lives in Austin. She's like, "You have those at the police station?" You know, just incredulous. And I thought, "Wow, we are really, really blessed to be able to do that." So, thank you very much and I'm glad I live in Leander, Texas. There's no place I'd rather live, so thank you very much. With that, can we get a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Time is 7:45. I'll never jinx this again.